Okay, I'll come up to the people who were raised. We did legislation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks everybody coming out after Christmas. Many here probably didn't have much choice. But we're all here and thanks for your time. Let's do, approve the minutes of the December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen regular meeting. Motion? Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkerson. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Oh, yes. I can hear Carol there. Okay, public comments, no one signed in, bro.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, now, Mr. Cummings is not going to be with us, is that right?
Right, that's correct. And I'd like to do is move him to the January fifth of January.
Okay, well, you all next to work that out, I'll be fine with us. Okay, so we don't have any other presentations or reports from anyone, so we'll just go straight to the administrative section. You have a motion, look at things items.
I'm moved.
Okay, Carol moved and Rowdy seconded. Okay, Ms. McKibb.
Okay, item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B is an agreement where Jennifer Pruitt provides transportation services for a student at West Hamel Elementary School for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, according to the terms of the agreement which is attached and funded through county law. Item C is an agreement with school improvement network provides staff training and support for Hamel PKA staff, according to the terms of the agreement which is attached and funded through KIWA.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments concerning administrative items? Out there will call for questions. Is that an all yes on the administrative item?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, finance item? Motion? I'm moved. Freea, signalary. First.
Okay, item A, scheduled invoices totaling seven hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred two dollars and ninety-three cents, they are attached. Invoices are available for public review at the county office. Follow that today.
All right. Anybody have anything about any of those items? Nothing, is that an all yes vote on the finance item?
Yeah.
Carol doesn't know all you two? Carol, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought maybe we got disconnected. Okay. All right, personnel, have a motion. I'm moved. Rowdy, seconded by Rachel Freea. Phil.
Okay, item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment of professional personnel pending FBI/CIB clearance, passage of practice, and issuance of certification and licensure. Item C, employment of professional personnel pending FBI/CIB clearance and insurance of certification and licensure. D, employment of professional personnel pending issuance of first-class permit. Item B, leave of absence. Select A, B, C, D, E. Item P, leave of absence. And item F would be resignations and retire.
Okay, I've got two Ds in there. Okay, we're with you, I think. Okay, anybody have any questions about the personnel items meeting? Anything that would give that, just say. So, is there a vote for an all yes on the personnel items? Is that an all yes?
Yes.
Okay, all yes on it. Okay, you have something else?
Well, the one I give you is two reasons. They were filled with three positions since last time. We still have some vacancies at the high school and some vacancies at Harons. Of course, math especially is usually the ones that we have covered fairly and then it's same ones we're still having.
And when you have difficulty in midway, you know you have problems on this.
That's what we have every teacher, every hand doctor.
Good, good. All right, anything else on personnel? All right, let's then go to comments and concerns. Okay, on this, I'll just announce the time. This is the first time that we've ever done this, so we're gonna all work together on it. Rowdy, I think we gave you a copy. Mr. Hurley.
Thank you.
Mary, you got four? There's three, if I had this. Okay. This is something that was required by legislation in prior years. I can't remember the exact year, a couple, two or three years ago. But at that time, the legislature passed this code eighteen-five-one-C, which required a self-assessment by boards of education throughout the state. For the past couple of years, the West Union School Board Association has been assigned a task coming up with the document to utilize. That would be an approved document for self, for board education to use. So, as all the board knows, this past June, we were all sent by email, a self-evaluation form, which we all completed in June and turned in. And that went to Hager Russo, which the School Board Association had gotten to do this for us. So, once again, this took a couple of years for this process to unfold to where we are now. So, this is the first year that we've actually, well, we do it here in our county, but any county has actually complied with this as required by code. As you can see on the front of that, it kind of summarizes what I just said there a little bit about West Union Code eighteen-five-one-C requires each of the county's boards to do this annually, assess their own performance. And then the statute further states reevaluation is in self-focus on the effectiveness of the county board in the following areas. And as we kind of look at those in a second, you'll see that those were the focus of what was done. At the conclusion of that, the law requires that the board prepare a public statement for the public, obviously, as to its feelings about that self-assessment. Now, at no time have we seen the results of anyone else other than ourselves. What you have before you today, which is available for the public, anyone that wants to see this, they're welcome to come in and see it. Kurt, would you like to do that?
Yes.
But we, all we have seen is this aggregate compilation of all of our responses. And so, this is, I don't know how Mr. Curry rated his or anyone else. I don't know how Rowdy did, he doesn't know how I did. All he knows is that as a group, this is, these were our results. Okay. Now, what I would like to do now is just kind of look at the first item. There's sixteen questions, and then there's a seventeenth one, which is more of a, it's not a specific question, but it allows you to give input. But what I want on this first one, just look at the answer choices, just so familiarize yourself with those of you that haven't seen it yet. We'll see that we had four options on this. As you can see, we could have rated it, most of our actions comply with this, some of them do, few of them do, or almost none of them do. So, it kind of looks like the first two, most and some, would be kind of positive responses, whereas few or almost none of them in a negative nature. And as you're going to see as we go through here, we were fairly consistent in our responses, that all of ours were in the most or the some category, and we didn't have any in those bottom two categories. So, once again, seeing as we all did this independently of one another, I think that fares well for us as a group, that you see some of the topics that have been covered here, that we, you know, we're never going to always agree on everything as far as, well, we do that really great, or we do it okay. But I think as long as we're not saying, well, some people think we're doing a really good job, and others say we're doing a terrible job, that says something in itself.
Well, and I'll just add.
Go ahead.
Even though we want to agree this, that this will not be a poorly written question, not all questions should be answered in a database approach. There are questions that are not answered based on data. So, I don't remember my personal answer to this question, but I know that I would never answer every question based on, just on that. There are things other than data that go into answering questions. So, I don't view the answers we have on this question as any dissension. It's a matter of how you read the question.
Okay. I can read that.
Need to interrupt?
No, it's okay.
Poorly written question.
Now, this is something we're doing first time. We got adequate time since Rod's not here, so we're not being hurt. We can walk our way through this. Okay, now, the first one there, you can see county board, which I serve, uses a database approach and make decisions. Okay, three of us responded that most of the time we do that, and two of us responded that some of the time we do that. But once again, it's not negative in nature. For the most part, we're consistent on that. And you can see that reflected at the bottom there. Then, we're not going to go in, but we all had the opportunity, if we chose to, or the option, to make comments about each one. And we're gonna, I'm not going to go to those, you can look at those yourself. They're not really something that we reflect anywhere else, but individuals always have the opportunity to make comments on each question as you go through it. So, you can look at those on your leash. Okay, on number two then, a little bit longer one here, county board on which I serve uses authority to ensure the superintendent administration is focused on student achievement, so it's student achievement related, to individual schools in the county and district. Then they go on as to various, I'll summarize here, that we have strategies and oversight as to the way you do that. And does the board have time set aside when those type things are reviewed, is essentially what it's saying. So, on that one, we, once again, we had three board members that felt that we did, most of the time our actions complied with that as stated, and two people felt that some of the time we did. So, once again, no, there wasn't a negative response, but fairly positive. And then, there were a couple of comments at the bottom, as you might note on your own there, maybe some people how we did that, or something like that. Okay, the third question, the county board on which I serve engages parents in the local community. Obviously, we're all very consistent on this one. Everybody, all five of us, said that some of the time we do that. So, to me, that implies we're doing that, but we probably could do it a little bit better. But we're doing it most of the time, and we address it somehow. And then at the bottom, you can see some comments related to that. But I don't think you can be more consistent than all five of us thinking. That all it tells is the way we feel.
We have publicly open meetings, and the community always has an opportunity to attend and speak on any issue at any meeting, whether we can respond or not. And in the time that I sat on this board, we've had people that made those comments by signing in fewer than, I don't know, probably ten times. So, it's a two-way street. I mean, I wish we had more involved, I wish we had more people that were involved, that came and talked to us publicly about their wants and needs and thoughts about how we're doing, how the school system's doing. But I think we do all that we can do, but we don't have a lot of public input.
At times it improves.
We can get more of it on my copy if you, so I'm sure that's a positive.
Well, that's true, that's true. Okay, number four then, the county board on which I serve is committed to support its students through development of our own board goals and objectives, through appointing proper personnel, through distributing our finances equally among our schools, the target of these which are struggling schools, and as necessary by working to address issues that may hinder the school district's achievement, this mission to educate all students. We demonstrate these principles in. Okay, now, on this one, we had four responses that thought we did it most of the time, and one that thought it was done some of the time. But as this one states here, you know, we come up with our goals and objectives that we have, then we try to use our personnel in an equitable manner, and the finances we have available to us, although not probably the finances we'd like to have, but we try to distribute our equity throughout the school system. I personally believe we do that, and we go to LSIC meetings, we'll hear needs that schools have, and then we try to address them within our ability to do so. But four of us thought that we did most on that, and one was most, some of the time. Okay. Number five, the county board on which I serve has ease of access to its policies. Our county board uses policy-making authority affecting the governance of school districts. So, on that one, another one, we had four that felt we did that most of the time, and one that felt we did it some of the time. Now, this one, of course, would be available online in a different manner, as far as how our policies are stated, but they're, in my opinion, accessible to anybody that really wants to see them. Okay, four to one on that. Okay, number six, the county board on which I serve delegates responsibility for policy and program implementation to the county superintendent. Our board uses oversight and monitoring protocols to ensure that policies and programs are being implemented effectively. Our board bases these determinations on several factors, including reports of school board receives to the superintendent. We demonstrate this approach in. So, on this one, we had four responses that most of the time we do that, and one some of the time. And if Mr. McKibb got to respond, he would probably do it most of the time. He oftentimes asks him to respond to things, and I think also, things like the transportation director is scheduled to be here, that kind of falls into that too. He uses others on his staff, on board, central office staff, to convey the things that we need to be aware of. So, four to one, we thought that we, most of the time we did that. Number seven, the county board on which I serve demonstrates its flexibility by adjusting our decision, making mature our goals or achieve based on factors such as newer data we receive from various sources, primarily this county superintendent administration, what we learn about developments, especially from state, federal levels, that may affect our school district, and from information we receive in our meetings with the LSICs, and from community constituencies and other persons or groups. Our county board demonstrates the value of this approach in. So, another, we, four to one, four people felt we did most of the time, and one person definitely did some of the time. This is kind of a broad way of, I guess, we have, we get information. I mentioned LSICs a minute ago, Rowdy alluded to the fact that people come in of constituencies and talk to us, and then the things that McKibb or his family bring to us, and kind of things we may hear from any group or individual, and how we reacted, so we've got a, as it says, flexibility in adjusting our decision-making as to how we would try to address that goal or objective, whatever it might be. Okay, number eight then, the county board on which I serve has established standards, practices, and procedures resulting from effective boards, superintendent, working relationship is demonstrated in. Okay, on this one, we had two that, excuse me, most of our actions comply with that, and three, we felt that some of our actions complied with that. I'm afraid that one, he doesn't get voted. Now, we feel like we have a good relationship with Mr. McKibb. I know we convey things to him, and he's eager to share things with us. Okay, number nine, the county board on which I serve has meetings that are well-managed. Our meetings are typified by a form of respect between among our members, based largely on clear expectations regarding the board member conduct. Our meetings are structured to provide, receive, and recommend to the county superintendent or administrative staff. Our meetings also allow for meaningful public input. All of our members are encouraged to participate in board discussions, deliberations, and decisions, and we demonstrate this approach in. On that one, we had four people that felt we did it most of the time, and one person that we did it some of the time. And that would be kind of a little bit of everything. I think we all get along well. I think we're respectful of one another, and everybody has their opportunity to get their two cents in, so to speak.
Steve, were these filled out before July first?
It was done in June.
June, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was a four to one response. On this front page later, Ron Sean, you can, when you get.
Okay.
If you look at, you'll see that the window for us is from June the second.
All right.
We do it.
Thanks, Steve.
Take it home with you, you can really analyze.
It's a quiet week, yeah.
Okay, what will be on number ten? The number ten, the county board on which I serve values training and development, including participation in local, regional, and state-level training and development programs. To further this objective, we may request development, training, and development initiatives that will address those specific school district needs and goals our board identifies. What we learn from this training and development is demonstrated in. Okay, on that one, two of us thought we did it most of the time, and three, some of the time. Of course, this would involve things like we go to the school board conference a couple of times a year, and things like that, which we all eagerly look forward to, and we go to RISA, and now they have the annual or every day meeting in July, regional meeting for RISA's where we attend to. So, this would be various ones, and then there are other trainings and, some of us attend, they can go, day-long activities that are held throughout the state we go to. But on that one, once again, two, most of the time we do that, and three, some of the time. Then number eleven, the county board on which I serve subscribes to develop effective working relations and order to advocate our school system with various entities and groups, including the state board of education, state superintendent of schools, and Department of educators, legislators, county constituency groups, etc. Our board concludes this need for evidence to see arises due to the influence that more impacting these entities in. On that one, all five of us felt like we did that most of the time, that we worked with the various other groups, wherever they might be, or, you know, the Department of Education, or the state superintendent comes here, or they are plus to them, our legislators. We talk to them, not often in public, maybe in meetings, but we talk to our legislators quite often, and of course, once again, groups have come to speak to us. But that was a five-oh on that particular one. Okay, number twelve, the county board on which I serve has a working knowledge and understanding of its judiciary role, including an understanding of the financial reports presented by the county superintendent administration, working knowledge of our budget and factors that affect our budget, including student enrollment trends, personnel deployment, and an understanding of board revenue projections. This approach is reflected in. And we had five-oh on that, that most of, most of the time, everybody felt like we did that. And I think that's obvious in many of the things that we see happen. Burry's not here right now, but things certainly, you know, she presents us at each board meeting the current status of things budgetary in nature, and then she's always given us her monthly updates, and all the things that she does, along with the things that the other directors provide with us in their departments, when called upon. So, I think that's one we all feel that we do real well on, and it's real important to constantly deal with. Number thirteen, the county board on which I serve has both a clear understanding of its legal or statutory role in terms of matters regarding school district personnel, and as a result of such, does not involve itself in problematic matters regarding school personnel employment matters. This stance is reflected in. Okay, on that one, we had most of our actions, three people felt that way, and two felt some of our actions that way. But I think, I guess that gets back to the relationship of the board and the superintendent, that, you know, we know what our role is as board members, the superintendent knows what his role is as a superintendent, and we'd like to work cooperatively, but we don't want to get on the other side of the line next.
No.
Hopefully, then we get back to our place. I think, we may have our thoughts, but sometimes we keep works at, and he may have his. Okay, number fourteen, the county board on which I serve is willing to make future-oriented decisions that will advance public education in our school district, including decisions relating to facilities, personnel, or curriculum that may prove to be publicly unpopular at the time, but which we deem necessary for district progress. This approach is after the end. Okay, we had most of the time, I mean, four people felt that way, and one was some of the time. And I guess these, often times, boards have to deal with. We haven't had as many here up late than maybe a few years ago, whenever, you know, volatile issues like consolidation and all, you know, that's when you really, still, we're deal annually with things related to this here in the coming months, where we'll have to deal with personnel issues. We've lost control this year, so we have to adapt to that. So, in the future, I'm sure Mr. McKibb is going to, you know, I'd like to come before us and say, we're going to have to adjust our personnel because of our funding for next year, and having probably followed on true with all future-oriented decisions, and I think we all are very mindful of those, and we had our work session, we paid close attention. Number fifteen, the county board on which I serve has a working knowledge of federal and state-level issues that impact district functions, operations, curriculum, and programming, and is able to articulate this information to a variety of our county constituencies. This approach is reflected in, and all five of us felt that we did that most of the time. It changes so much, we have to all take close attention, especially the recent legislative activity, both at the federal and the state level, as to, you know, what's going on with curriculum in particular, and how are things changing, and King has to come and tell us how that's affected his offices, along with things that, that's whatever, his office for, everybody's well aware of. But we all feel like we do that most of the time. Okay, number sixteen, our county board subscribes to the ideal that our true constituents are the students of our district, according to this approach is reflected in, and then all five of us felt that we did that most of the time. And I know, I've heard many of you at times express that, that, you know, how does this affect students? Carol, I know that you would echo that, I've heard you say that many times. And, you know, how are, you know, what we do, how does it affect our students? Because that's really the bottom line of all these things we do. But all five of us felt like that, that was our primary concern, and I'm glad everybody liked that, like that. So, that's number sixteen. And number seventeen is a little bit different. We didn't have a specific question, but it gave us the opportunity to list things that we thought were important to the school system. And as you can see here, there were some various responses between the five of us, and you could read for yourself there. Some of them overlap, but you can see what some of the things that we thought were important, and they're not things that are new, you know, they're legal issues, and state laws, and Mr. Curry talking about personnel, personnel laws, and curriculum things, but these were just a general statement that we're discussing. Okay, so that was the results, and once again, we did it in June, and we did it independently, we all did it at home, sent them in or ever have, it's wherever it goes on the internet, and we did that part down. It was just, what, about a month ago that we got results? We got this aggregate report back, and it came to us, and then the board, I think it came to Mr. McKibb and I, that I made copies for the board here after, right after I got them, and gave them out to the board members, so they could have them ahead of time. Then we scheduled this meeting, because there really isn't a scheduled time for this, it's just that the board must do it annually.
And this is a brand-new, I mean, this is the first time that we had to review to do this, review it, and I know there were questions, but what exactly we had to do, because there's no precedent out there to tell us what we had to do in terms of meeting our obligations, so we wrangled with that a little bit.
Yeah, well, that's it. So, that's why we're, even at our last recent meeting, like Jeff will tell you, that question came up at the recent meeting from Bill Smith from Campbell County, the superintendent, and, how are you guys going to do this? Because it's new to everyone, and when are you going to do it? And I haven't read anywhere or heard on the news of any other county having done this yet around us, so. But I told Mr. Smith that they, that we had our schedule, you know, the twenty-ninth of December. We thought that, one, we didn't want to have it at a meeting when we might have a lot of other activities going on, and kind of concentrate on, like Rowdy says, it's new, we want the kind of killer way to resume, but, okay, so that's what we have. Now, what I'd like to do next is give to each board member, we also have to make a public statement. And what I would, I've kind of got a draft here. I'd like for each one of you to look at this, and then provide a, now, I've sent that to you, Carol, so you've seen it too. So, if anybody, just kind of, I'll give you a minute to look that over, and if you want to, you can alter it, whatever you might want to do. And once everybody's comfortable with it, Sean, I'll give you a copy.
Thank you, sir.
But it's still in the possible amended stage right now. This, all this information is available in the public. I know Sean asked me the, one time when I gave it up to board, and I told him, he would certainly be pretty to it at the proper time, and that was, okay. And then, Brent, that we'll have that available. And the grid, that we'll have that available for you, if you want, and the public, if they want to see our aggregate results.
I can't put today like you have, but it's a pretty good state.
Good, that's what I like to hear, Carol.
Yep. That's a one-page summary of 17 questions.
Well, what I'm trying to do is, is address the items that were shown in there, to where there might be things you needed to address, the areas that might need necessarily improvement that were stated, and plus, at the same time, summarize the whole purpose of this whole process. You gentlemen on the end, okay? Okay, good. Sean. And you, you're close to it, Sean. Now, to fully comply with the law, I'm now going to read our public statement. Lincoln County Board of Education, 2015 Performance Assessment. West Virginia Code 18-5-1C requires that each county school board annually assess their performance utilizing the state-approved assessment instrument. All five members of the Lincoln County Board of Education completed the online performance instrument in June 2015. The aggregated performance assessment results were prepared by Hager Russo for the West Virginia School Board Association, and were forwarded to all board members in the school, and the superintendent of Lincoln County Schools. Lincoln County Board of Education members have discussed the compiled results of the assessment in open session as part of the regular scheduled meeting on June 29, 2015. The public is advised that the results of the assessment are available for review upon request. The board has concluded during their discussing the assessment that all members rated the 16 questions with the responses that the board's actions or decision-making efforts were meeting the stated topic either most of, most, or some of the time. November provided up a response that few or almost none of the board's actions addressed the topic or on any of the 16 questions stated in the assessment. The assessment results show general consistency among all members for all of the questions contained in the assessment instrument. Members of Lincoln County Board of Education believe that the board has an understanding of the purpose and direction necessary to effectively address each of the 16 assessment questions with the goal of improving the school system. Members have concluded that, that school board training should be considered in the following areas: the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and board members, legal issues, including state laws, student achievement, curriculum, personnel issues, finance, and the use of drugs. Members have also concluded that continued improvement is warranted for student achievement, engagement with parents and local communities, board superintendent relationship, and county-identified local, regional, and state training and development programs. Okay. If anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to respond to them if possible. If not, I think we've met our obligation for this year. That's the hope of it. Now, as Rowdy pointed out there, this is all due to us, and so we've done it one time, so maybe next year we'll be a little bit more familiar to everybody, including us. This is, once again, required by statute, and we do our best to comply with that all the time. Okay. Anybody have any other comments or concerns? Right there? Mr. Meekev?
I was just going to mention that the insulation of the windows and the deckwork was continuing this week. Looks like we're about to finish up. The grid I stopped up there, the windows are gray, and even the pieces that were missing out there, I looked, rather, and they're starting to fill in.
I, I looked, I saw some of them there now. Now, have you seen it from the inside yet?
Yes, we went inside, yeah. They look great. It's next step now to change minds where those windows were.
It's always, it looks like a new building, but it's, it's, it's.
Also, our maintenance men this week are out there replacing, putting down new tile in the cafeteria, kitchen area, tile that's very old and...
And hanging.
And hanging on it. And that, that work, we finished this about in the week, something like, much, it looks still great and finished.
Maybe a good present for everybody to come by and check it out.
Sure will, sure will.
Give something else I can make. The floodwaters from the other day, were, had any problems?
Other than the debris that involved, involved the K8, which I haven't had a chance to ask Mr. Smith this morning, but he was going to have a crew go over and start flooding it up. It didn't get as high as it had earlier back in the spring, this past spring, and it had flooding over it.
It looks like, excuse me?
It did make, make quite a mess of the, the, the.
It looks like a lot of it's been cleaned up and saved from it.
That's true. But did it get on the ball field? Like, I couldn't see that from the road when I played it.
Somewhat, most bad as usual.
My football field, we talked about.
Right. It's pretty muddy.
It's fair in the softball field.
It did not get on the softball field, so.
Yeah. But we don't know at this point if it's coming to me, but.
As far as I know, it didn't get near the locker room, or the concession stand or anything, so I think it got nearly as high as it did at last year.
And maybe we dodged the first ball. Maybe four again. It's sided around Hamlin, I'll tell you that much. And Wes.
Just legal update, which I'd like to request, executive session, number eight.
All right, is, does anybody have anything else? I think Mr. Meekev wants to do an executive session for legal matters. If I have anything outside of that. Okay, it's not an interpane a motion, do an executive session for personnel matters at 1:37. Rowdy makes a motion, second by, free. Oh, yes?
Yeah.